First item on tonight's agenda is the Recreation Board with an update on the five-year capital plan. You guys want to come forward?
Great, another great day.
All right.
Appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk with you. I'm Bob Keizer from the Rec Board. With me is Charlie Langham. We periodically update the five-year plan typically about every two years. We've gone back through, we've looked at what all we've gotten accomplished in the past. Everything from opening that new soccer complex over on 13, a new main construction, a new main concession stand at Majors, incorporating some pickleball courts into the tennis courts out at Stimson, the six new hydro courts out at the Mike Ford Tennis Center are huge hits. They are full all the time. We've air-conditioned the visitors' concession stand at Majors. We've got new playgrounds at the youth baseball fields and at the Fairhope Soccer Complex. We've repainted the indoor pool area and we've completed a proposed facility master plan for Valana Park. Our understanding is that the projects that have been approved for execution in 2019, provided there's no emergency that requires reprogramming, would include paving the driveway into the soccer complex concession stand, resurfacing the track at Valana Stadium, replastering the indoor swimming pool, realize that may get moved around a little bit, a land purchase for additional recreation space, making Valana Stadium ADA accessible, constructing an additional court at the Mike Ford Tennis Center for pickleball, and constructing new batting cages softball complex. And a number of those are already underway right now. Given that, we prioritize the following items as part of the five-year plan. The first priority, and this is the new first priority, is to get additional land purchased for recreational purposes. I understand there's a couple of areas that are under consideration, there's a couple of items that are under consideration as far as additional land. The area down around Twin Beach, there's concern about the lack of recreational facilities down there. I know there's land down in that area that's being looked at. After extensive discussion within the Rec Board, our belief is that what we need in the Twin Beach area is something akin to Fairhope's park. They need a park. They don't need a field complex. I don't think they're looking for a lot of traffic coming through there for attending a lot of ballgames. I think they're looking for a park where their kids can go to play. The unanimous recommendation of the Rec Board was to look at the land that's south of the current Fairhope Soccer Complex for the additional space where we'll have sufficient land that we can spread out. We've got to have more baseball fields. We are maxed out at Valana right now and that program continues to grow. So our recommendation would be to acquire the land south of town and at the same time acquire about five acres in the Twin Beach area so we could put a community park in that area. And if you have any questions as we're going through this, please stop me. Charlie will be glad to answer them. Our second priority is to complete the engineering study of Valana Park. We currently have a conceptual design for reworking Valana Park that would improve circulation, it would improve parking, it would help with the tight field space that we've got in that area right now. At this point, all we've got is a conceptual design. We need that area surveyed and we need an engineering study completed so that we can actually determine what we can and can't do with Valana Park. Third priority is refurbishing the visitors' concession stand at Majors Field. I had mentioned that we've already added air conditioning to that, but it's undersized, it's underpowered, and it needs to be connected into plumbing utilities. We're also looking to the Pirate Booster Club to assist in this refurbishment. So they will help with the planning of it as well as with the funding of it. Fourth priority is to complete a master plan for the build-out of the municipal pool. If you go to the municipal pool in the summertime, you can't get a parking space and you probably can't get in the door because it's packed all the time. And it's actually taxing the ability of the filtering system there to keep up with the load of swimmers that are in there throughout the summer. So we really need to look at what we need to do next to best meet the recreational needs of this community. Our fifth priority would be to implement the first phase of that municipal pool master plan. Probably, our thought is, we would either be looking at a second lap pool or a splash pad water park that could be put in there to take some of the load off of the existing Priority six, repairs to the Fairhope Softball Complex. I'm pleased to say that this is already underway. They're currently constructing two new covered batting cages out there that look really nice. We need to take a look at the concession stand, which definitely needs some upgrading, as well as evaluate the press boxes and the storage that's downstairs from those press boxes. The one thing that the Fairhope softball program does not have is meeting space right now. So a potential renovation of the concession stand may yield the space that's needed for that. Seventh priority is a master plan for the growth of disc golf. If you come out here on any day of the week, at any time of the day, you'll find folks traipsing around Valana Park playing disc golf. It's very, very popular. We probably don't have the space to put in another 18 holes out here, but we do have space within the community where that could be done, thinking in terms of the Colony Nature Park as a possible alternative. But we really need to take a look at where we can get additional disc golf holes put in around the city. Priority number eight, the city has acquired the Colony Nature Park. We need to develop a master plan for that. That kind of dovetails into priority number seven. We need to decide what to do with that in terms of walking trails, a disc golf course, perhaps running trails. Right now, it's space that's not usable and we need to make it usable for as tight as land is within our recreational community. Priority nine is the Barnwell concession stand. Youth football continues to grow and what we've experienced is a lack of space down at Barnwell. They use the upstairs to store all of their equipment in the offseason. The downstairs, they use for the concession stand in the front half, the back half are the restrooms. The restrooms are undersized for the number of people that are out there on a typical football day, and they don't have enough room to take care of the equipment that they've got to store there. So we really need to get that concession stand expanded so that we've got adequate rest facilities and storage. Priority 10 is the new racquetball court at the Rec Center. The racquetball court stays perpetually booked. If you want to play, you've got to look out a couple of weeks if you want to get a date. It's something that we believe would be utilized fully if it were constructed. Priority 11, implement the recommendations on the Colony Nature Park master plan. This is just following up on building out what was decided in priority eight. And last priority is to construct an Olympic-sized swimming pool with a diving well adjacent to our existing indoor pool at the City Recreation Center. Again, given the amount of swimmers that we've got in that facility, particularly through the summer, it's needed.
Questions, council?
Not a question, really, but, and I apologize for walking in late. The construction or sort of renovation of Valana, this actually came up at a baseball board meeting a couple nights ago, and I don't know exactly what the new plan. I remember the old plan for Valana and that's-
The one that you-
Yes, sir. And that's now kind of changed a little bit since they've redone the fields out there a little bit. And I think somebody from the park reached out to Tom maybe about getting two additional fields out there, kind of taking up that space behind what used to be the Dixie Boy Field, which is now being used for the 8U team or 7U teams. Being able to get another rookie field and another T-ball field potentially behind that, I don't know if anybody's reached out to y'all about that from the park, or if that's part of the discussion that you guys have had. And when I say this, this just came to my attention a couple days ago. And the idea behind that is very much what you said, which is, you know, we do need some additional recreational space. That is going to take time and our baseball enrollees are growing every year to the point where we're having to cut games because we don't have enough space for all the kids. I mean, for T-ball, for example, I think there are 16 or 18 teams and we've only, we've been able to reduce it to, or had to reduce it to 11 games each because there's only one field and there's so many kids playing. It's only growing every year, so we've got to find a way to get them some additional space.
So to piggyback on that question too, if we were, or when we had purchased additional land, have y'all talked about breaking the youth leagues into like an American League and a National League? Say you would have additional baseball fields there and that would relieve a lot of that pressure? Because you don't want to fill up the new stuff immediately.
Right. No, no, no. What we have discussed is possibly moving, taking the T-ball and the peanuts, leaving them possibly at Valana and moving the new, out to the new facility. You've got a natural break there, but that would be, you know, discussion between the league, who should have a lot of input because the volunteers, you know, do so much.
But also would affect the master plan as to what could be, you know, would you maximize the land use at Valana? Let's say that you moved Peanut and T-ball out to a new location and would you have the room for additional minor or major fields there?
Yes. And that's, one of the challenges you've got at Valana is you've got so much going on there. In addition to packing in all the baseball, and one of the considerations if you start splitting the leagues is the family that's now got kids in multiple leagues in multiple locations. So run and drop the kids here, carry the other ones off to the other complex, drop them, go back. Part of it's a matter of convenience, and you've also got to look at the space limitations that are currently at Valana because you start creeping back into the wood line, now you're into the disc golf fields. We've got a dog park out there, we've got parking for football games, which gets maxed out in the last couple of years. So the more that you pack in, the less space that you have available for other functions that are going on out there. Part of our hope is, if we get this land acquired and we can get some fields constructed, and again, with some input from the leagues, figure out what's a sensible split for this so that we can make better use of the space that we've got at Valana.
And as Jay knows, right now, trying to practice, we don't have. All we've got is what we've got, and we don't have places to practice. I know even back when I had the league and we only had 200 kids, and now you've got, what, 900? And we had trouble even then finding places for the kids to get enough practice time in so that they could play.
About two and a half years ago, I mean, when I took office, I met with all the directors and when I met with Tom, he showed the master plan. And I want to first thank y'all. Y'all are very active and engaged with all the parks and I appreciate that. Y'all do a lot of work. And that master plan was really great because you kind of envisioned another way. But then I asked him, I said, can we think about 10 to 15 years? Because although I like this plan, you know, he communicated that ballparks, you know, baseball, softball is the fastest-growing sport. And of course, in the fastest-growing community, we already know that we've outgrown Valanta. It's not that we're going to get rid of anything there, but we do have to think about a bigger vision. And that's when I told him, let's look for land. And then we, of course, got that approved by council. And, you know, when we looked at land with everything that we're doing, when we think about the whole city and comprehensive planning, it's about thinking, you know, keeping the things that we love about Fairhope and building upon that. So when we think about master planning, it's not just about master planning for a park, it's about the whole city and how the parks are available to everyone. And we're growing east and so therefore we definitely want to invest in land there too. But it's about connectivity and walkability as well. And the, you know, finding the land that Tom found last year that was approved to purchase, it's more than just about what you can do on that land. It's about what it can be. We even had it as part of a National Park Service plan. We got a grant for that. They came in and they're working with us to complete that plan. And they looked at both properties and recommended this one, again, for the walkability. Not to mention that it is a shot in the arm for an area that could definitely use it and economically that would be very, very good for our city. So I think that like the K-1 Center, big decisions like this need to be community-engaged. And that's because we all have our own ideas, but since this is kind of going in a different direction than even the community engagement that we've done, that's how we need to approach it. And there's no question, I hope everybody agrees, that, you know, the best decisions are made when we do it, you know, inclusive rather than exclusive. So that's my input about the ballpark.
Counsel, any other questions? Yeah, I don't know. Did you get your question?
Yeah, no, I did. And I want to echo the mayor's compliment to you guys for the amount of work you guys put in, the amount of volunteering that y'all do. It really is, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into the Rec Board that doesn't get recognized a lot because it applies to all sports across the board and there's tents huge in Fairhope. So you guys do a lot of work and you need to get the recognition for it. We appreciate all that y'all did.
Well, we hope that while y'all are thinking about land purchase, that we buy enough land because land will only be here for a short while. We're filling up everything there is, they're putting subdivisions, they're doing various things. We won't have it available to us. When we bought the land at Bailey Road from the soccer complex, we thought then, you know, what are we going to do in the future? And of course, soccer's already outgrown, baseball's already outgrown. And to limit ourselves to 40 acres, I think, would be, especially if we can do better.
Well, anybody that has any question about whether or not the space is needed and how much is needed, go to Valana Park on a Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday night when there is a Little League and a high school baseball game-
And soccer.
And soccer. And when you park, when you have to park out, you know, on the four lane and walk back down, then I think you'll understand. I mean, it is unbelievable how packed that park is. Some of it is a little treacherous sometimes, I mean, because you've got some, you know, some parking issues.
What are those really, yes?
I have a couple of questions about a few of these items. Disc golf, you said it's very, very popular, and we have the one disc course that goes around, meanders around Valanta Park. Do you have to have a recreation pass to play that course?
No.
So we're providing that to, you could be from any city, anywhere, and come use that. And now we're talking about building another disc golf course somewhere else in the city and there's no revenue there?
There's no fee for it, but it's a, people that play the sport are very passionate about it and we run into folks all the time who go, they're at the condos down in Gulf Shores on vacation and they Google disc golf courses and then they come up and actually play the course. It brings a lot of people to town. There's folks that, you know, I've met from Evergreen and Dulthen and places like that that are, just want to play different courses. It's, I guess it's kind of like golf, you know, you're always wanting another challenge. So, I mean, and there's folks from Mobile and Pensacola and vice versa. Some of our players go over there to Pensacola and Tallahassee and they travel around quite a bit. So no, there is no revenue, there's no passes to be bought or anything. It's just a community thing.
It's coming to town and maybe spending money in town while they're here. But we don't have anything to-
They're also great stewards.
They are.
They pick up trash as they go around the course, they, I mean, they're just-
But when we're talking about building another one with a cost like that, I have to ask that question.
But you had an idea too, Tom, for a location.
Well, you know, I would really like to incorporate something out there at the colony property and put maybe nine holes of disc golf out there adjacent to, you know, walking or running trails, nature trails out there. Nothing paved, just some beams to, you know, designate the trail and some mulch or something in there and, you know, the disc golfers could walk through there and step off the trail and tee off and-
It'd be a great place.
-continue on down. And it, you know, I don't think the investment would be that much and it would open that place up. The biggest hurdle out there is where the parking area is, right there on Twin Beach, there's quite a ravine to get over to the usable side, the west side of the property. And so it would require a bridge and there's even, you know, the Boy Scout troop is even interested in possibly building one, but they're having something engineered before I, we, you know, bring it to you and try to partner with them on that. But that would, you know, that's what would make that park.
Well, then there is the upkeep of that too, at that site. You know, you're going to have a lot of, you're going to have to have somebody on staff mowing and cutting.
We do that already.
Are we cutting that area now?
Yeah, we do that whole, nearly that whole 40 acres.
But I think just in future planning, we need to do it together because there's already things we've been discussing because that's all we do is discuss things every day. And it just needs to be part of, you know, involving y'all and everybody because we're not doing anything on our end that's making decisions exclusively, obviously because we can't make those decisions. But we are constantly planning and doing a bigger picture for all of our parks, which will be tied into the comprehensive land use plan that starts this year.
The disc golf trail that exists now, like Charlie said, they pick up their own trash. We go through about once a week and pull the garbage liners out and we don't have to pick up any trash. They're picking up sticks and putting in piles and there's, I mean, there's, except for the garbage, there's really, you know, no maintenance that we do to it. The baskets are quality-built steel and chain and they don't go anywhere.
All right, let me move on. And this is a lower priority on priority 12. Talked about an Olympic-sized swimming pool adjacent to the existing pool. Would you grow that, which way would you grow that pool then? Would you grow it to the north or to the west?
It'd have to be to the north.
Is that pool configured to make an Olympic-sized pool in that direction?
I mean, it's all a big domino thing. If we don't-
Yeah, you've got another pool in the way there, right?
If we don't have more property, then, you know, I can't get rid of that front field, that front baseball field to help with parking on Friday nights and graduation and things like that. So right now, that, you know, I can't give up that space. But, you know, we remove that front field, you know, then that would open up more parking on that side of the park, which would allow us to add on to the swimming pool complex.
And we also would like to do this in partnership with Thomas Hospital, who has, you know, already communicated that they have a lot of the experience in programs, but they're out of room and they want to use what they have at Thomas Hospital for rehabilitation. And we have opportunity to grow and can always use that expertise and programming. So a partnership is something we're going to continue to come up with. But an outside Olympic pool would be incredible. And we have also found a resource that is, has been very popular with efficient way to do a seasonal with a dome-
The dome buildings, yes.
-that's temporary and very affordable.
So back to when I was asking, so we really can add on to that pool. It suggested that we would add on to that pool, and I didn't know how we would do that. And then second, my second following question I had is, a diving well. I know that we've actually had a state champion diver here that had to go to Mobile, but how many people do we really have participating in diving that we need to have a diving well in the pool?
You know, I don't think any citizens, there may be a few out there, but it'd mainly be for a school sport because, you know, we don't have a dive team because we don't have a dive well for them to practice and it's, you know, it's kind of tough on people to go all the way to Mobile for practice.
That's back to providing for, and we do that a lot, but if you had to ask, it's strictly for a school's sport. We provide almost all of our schools' athletic facilities, aside from gymnasium, I would say.
Right.
But is that really something we want to do for one person a year? Yeah, okay. It has to be looked at. And then is the county willing to help us with facilities for the, you know, we have to always ask that question too. What's the school board willing to kick in for something that's benefiting the school sports?
And you never know though. You don't have a dive team because you don't have a dive well. You get dive well, you might have a dive team. Might be 30 of them.
Well, it's the same thing with the track. I think we're probably the only 7A school, probably in the state of Alabama that doesn't have a track. And the track that we've got at the stadium doesn't, isn't sufficient, it's not big enough. And we can't build a big enough one there.
It will never be adequate there.
So if we're going to think about a track, then again, we need to partner with the schools in some way and see if there's not something we can work out because that's where most of our track athletes are. I think we've got, I think Scotty told me the other day, two people who use the track. Just citizens who go out and walk around it or do whatever.
Well, and we're wandering into an area that I told Tom I wasn't going to talk about, but I'm going to talk about it anyway. As you look at the, as you look at the land, I've had a number of conversations with Cecil. If we, they're looking to build another school right now and the intent is to build another high school. And I don't think there's a whole lot of Fairhopeians that are looking forward to having two Fairhope high schools. If you were to take the land that's south of town and acquire part of it by the school board for construction of the school and part of it for recreational space, now when you start looking at the synergies of, we don't have a track. Well, now you put a track at an area that's adjacent to a school where it can be used by that school.
Baldwin County Board of Education can pay for it too.
Well, and that's, there's, there's some synergies that you can get out of doing something like that.
Why not?
But it also gives you some opportunities.
I know, but we're the only ones that, where the county has not purchased it for us, so.
Make that a middle school down there, take the existing middle school, make it part of the high school. Now you've still got one Fairhope high school. I mean, there's things that you can do, working on those synergies, but again, it's got to be part of a master plan that thinks in terms of not just recreation, but recreation and education. And how do those two work together hand in hand? So there's, there's opportunities out there and I realize that it's just at the discussion stages, but those are things that I think we need to be thinking about.
Counsel, anything else? We thank y'all.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks for all your work.
We appreciate your support of your Rec Department. If you look at, if you look at the growth that takes place in all of our sports and you can't go to a single complex out there that's not maxed out most of the time, and our recreation department stays on top of that. We've got top-notch facilities, people still long to come to Fairhope to play tennis, to play baseball, to play soccer, to play football. We've got the best facilities in the state, some of the best in the country. And that's because you've got a Rec Department that does a tremendous job in maintaining that. And we appreciate the support that y'all give them.
Tom's awesome.
Appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you, y'all. I was thinking of how to expand that pool, take that road out that goes beside the building and go south.
Put it on the way of the property.
All right. Item two on the work session, substation upgrade project, project update. Mr. Allison?
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Good afternoon.
Thought I wanted to take a little bit of time, just kind of upgrade you, update you on where we are in the system and the five-year capital plan that y'all approved and we're in the process of going. Kind of want to start with some of the things that we've been doing along, some of the upgrades that we're doing. We renewed some of the cable up along North Mobile and Tensas, got rid of some old number six hard drawn copper up there that was getting pretty brittle. And kind of upgraded that whole system, pulled some poles that were in the middle of people's property lines, put them on the corners, things like that. And then we've also started doing some maintenance things, line patrols, which are best practices for most electric utilities. You want to look at your system every couple of years just to see what the condition of the poles are. And it's nothing in-depth like the pole inspection that we're also looking at. It's more of a kind of quick drive-by by the linemen just to see if they see anything obvious. One of the things that they did notice was there was one house where the meter had completely fallen off the house. So it was just definitely an unsafe situation and they found it because I had them go patrol that line. So they are seeing some of that stuff. Pole inspections, I do have on here that the bid packet was coming to you guys tonight. That's actually going to be in the next meeting. We're running into some Ts and Cs that we're working out right now. And so I want to get that in front of you and get that project going. With the vendors, we did have multiple bids again, so that was a great thing. So we're still analyzing it and I'll get it to you guys next council meeting. next meeting. We're running into some Ts and Cs that we're working out right now. And so I want to get that in front of you and get that project going. With vendors, we did have multiple bids again, so that was a great thing. So we're still analyzing it and I'll get it to you guys next council meeting. New technologies, some of the things we're looking at, there's some new rec closers in there. And some other types of devices, self healing systems, where the devices will communicate with each other to restore outages. The size of Fairhope, though, we always want to make sure that it makes sense for us. The engineer in me is always, oh, cool, that's really cool how that works, but, you know, twenty thousand dollars a shot, does it make sense for us? And a lot of times the answer's no. But we always want to look at stuff like that. So that's kind of just a little quick update on what we're doing, just to kind of get the system, distribution system going and some maintenance issues we're doing. I do want to do the pole inspections every couple of years and then document all those so that if we ever are audited, we can say, okay, this is what we're doing. Every couple of years, we try to look at the whole system and see where things are, if we need to do any quick, you know, changing out insulators, changing out fuses, that kind of thing. So. The second thing I noticed is on the next slide, the forty-six KV sub transmission system. One of the first things I noticed when I got here was that three of our five substations are what's called radial. So we have really no way of backing them up on the feed to the subs, to the substations. So what this does is it creates a single point of failure, especially for Fairhope sub and Volanta sub. So if we were to lose one of those poles from Ingleside feeding over to Fairhope sub, we'd actually take both of those substations out until we have repairs made. And that's kind of a concern because there's not a loop on your, into your substations. And, you know, I've asked Lance to come here to kind of, if you have any questions like that. You know, my experience is two different utilities and then just talking to others along the ways. But you typically don't build substations radial. You always want to loop the feed into the sub. It also gives you more options for maintenance. If you guys remember, a couple months ago, we had that issue where we lost that switch on the forty-six and caused an outage for most of the city for a little bit of time. That was because we couldn't, we couldn't really isolate that switch on the forty-six KV system any other way than what we were doing it. And then we've, we've made the repairs and we got that switch changed out. Didn't, and we're gonna do the original work that had triggered that tomorrow, but it didn't solve the issue of not having some more switching on the forty-six KV system. So that was just one of the things I noticed and just kind of wanted to show you. And I did a quick rough order of magnitude. And I'm not asking for this. I just wanted to say, okay, if we were to loop the forty-six system, what do I think it would be? And in my experience, looking about a million dollars a mile for overhead. And that's about a two and a half mile stretch. So you're looking, rough order of magnitude, two point five million dollars. Again, I'm not asking for that. I just, you know, wanted, I was just kind of, what would that take? If we did try to go underground with that, you're looking about three times more possibly. It's very expensive to go underground. So it's kind of the, little bit of the maintenance stuff we're working on. I don't know if y'all have any questions on that. And then we can kind of get into the, where we are in the substation projects.
Anybody have any questions on maintenance items right now?
All right. So we're moving along pretty well. Twin Beach Substation, that's our big one. That's the one fifteen to forty-six KV sub. That's our main feed from Alabama Power where we get our, where we take ownership of the power. We have two new transformers coming in in October of this year. And we have a really good plan in place to set those on a couple of temporary pads while we're doing our commissioning and testing of those transformers. And then Lance is working on the contracts to get those transformers here, get them tested, energized, well, moved into place and then energized. So that one's moving along pretty well. The second one is Nichols. And Mr. Peterson, we've had several conversations about that new land for that substation. In fact, those transformers are being shipped here in October of this year. And we've got the land from Riviera Utilities. We met today. We actually had a really good meeting talking about the grading that we needed to do on that. And Lance has a really good design for that substation. Got a couple little things we're changing on some drainage issues today, but I think we're, we're in really good shape for that substation moving forward. I kind of skipped Fairhope sub and went into the Volanta, which is the last one that we're gonna do anything with. The transformers are October of two thousand twenty. And so we'll start construction on those early two thousand twenty-one more than likely, just to avoid some system peaks and capacity issues.
Mike, let me stop you. So just, just going back to Twin Beach and then talking about the Nichols Avenue. When would, it talks about when we're gonna receive some parts. And so I would assume that the work would commence around that time, or not commence, but begin. When will those be completed?
We've kind of got a rough chart. And we want to get started.
And if you've got that in here, I apologize for getting-
No, it's not. It's, we just got kind of the timelines today. There's still a little bit of fluidity to the timelines, because we're working out the details. And a little bit of that goes back to this last substation I want to talk about, because we're trying to bid it all as one package. And so get all the construction bid out as one package for all of the substations. And see if we can get some economies of scales going on that. Kind of like we did with the transformer bid, we bid all six at one time. And so, but what our plan is right now, especially on Twin Beach, since those are our main feeds into the city, we got to be very, very picky about when we do that, because we're doing them one at a time. So we have to move the whole city's load over to one transformer. So we've got to do that when our loads aren't so high. So we're kind of looking at February or March timeframe, when those loads are a little bit lower. We don't want it so cold. People are kicking in their heat strips, but we don't want everybody's AC on either. So we've got to be a little bit picky about when we're doing that. Once those transformers are in, it gives us so much more flexibility, because each of those transformers will be able to pick up the entire city no issues. So we still have a little bit of an issue-
Are you talking March twenty twenty maybe?
March of twenty twenty, yes. So we're getting, we're getting the equipment just at the earliest.
And what if you missed that window of say, March to April there?
I think we're still good, April, May. I would like to keep it out of the heating season. June might be getting a little rough when people start kicking on the air conditioners.
And so how long does it take once you, is that a two month period?
We've got Twin Beach slated as about an eight month project. There's a good bit of work going on down here.
Okay. But we'll do it half at a time. And then once, once Twin Beach is done, then we can move into Nichols. Since we are moving Nichols to a new site, we can do all of that work without deenergizing the existing substation whatsoever. So we aren't truly affected until we get ready for the switch over on Nichols. So and then Volanta will be kind of a, we'll have to pick up Volanta with the distribution system while we're doing that work, because we're not, we're changing out the three single phase transformers with one new three phase transformer.
I can cut mine off too.
I will say, understanding a little bit more about what we're doing here, that it's going to put our city in such a better position, because I don't know if you want to go into the problems that we, that exist right now if something happens. But, you know, all of them being radial, it just means that there's nothing being transferred to anything else when something goes down. And it's, this is going to be a huge improvement.
It sounds like we'll still be radial though.
Well, that's kind of, that's why I saved kind of Fairhope sub for the last.
Oh, I got ahead of myself.
It'll be an improvement, for sure, but it'll still be radial unless we add the three and a half to two million dollar, two and a half million.
Well, he's gonna, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself.
I'm sorry.
As part of what I want to talk about with, with Fairhope sub. So I'll answer that question, give me just a minute.
Yes.
So Fairhope sub, that is our heaviest loaded substation. You know, it's right by the water tank. It's kind of in the center of everything. We're scheduled for that transformer to be delivered in February. And again, a lot of this took place before I get here, but the original plan was to replace that one in place. And then they had talked about buying some land from the Board of Education just to the north of the water tank. Well, come to find out, since they're expanding that school, they're required to increase the size of their detention pond. And that was the land we were hoping to buy. So that's kind of off the table now, because they had to increase the size of that detention pond. They weren't real, when we met with them, they weren't real thrilled about selling it to us to begin with, but then the plans came in with that detention pond. So the next, well, that was the next consideration. So, you know, one of the issues with the existing location, since it is our most heavily loaded substation, there's really no room for expansion. We can, you know, we can still move forward with the plan to change the transformer out in place, but that has some inherent risk to it that I want to go over with y'all. But it doesn't really address the, the expansion of that substation as load continues to grow in the core of Fairhope, or give us the opportunity to create a loop down the road. There's no other way to get forty-six in there and out of there to loop it back up towards Volanta if we needed to, the way it is right now. So we started looking at a couple of different options. Obviously, the first option is to leave it in its existing location. What we would have to do while we're doing this work is we would have to deenergize the substation completely while we're doing the work. So we would have to pick up all that load with our other existing substations. It can be done. It's going to stress the system, especially over the winter peak or summer peaks. And we're actually switching a little bit more into a winter peaking utility. Our last two peaks have been in January compared to the summertime. And that's probably a good month, month and a half to do that, that that system would have to be configured over to the twelve KV and picked up that way while we're doing that work. Still doesn't alleviate the safety concern. Again, when I first started, Mr. Morgan took me out to show me the tie down straps that were on the tarp on top of the tank. And I about had a heart attack, just seeing that metal hanging down to that bus work. That was scary. And then again, ultimately, it doesn't resolve the, the substation concern of being able to loop them together. So we started looking at what are some other options that we could do with this. So the other option is to look at relocation of the substation. First advantage to that is we can build a new substation while we're, while the existing substation is energized. So we don't have to risk the distribution system at all. We can build a new substation, get it completely ready to go, and then just do our cutovers. Second advantage is it allows future growth. We will have the ability, if we do relocate this, to add a second transformer down the road, which would let us pick up, basically we could add three additional feeders to the city, which just increases our reliability, increases our field ties, all that kind of thing on the whole system. The other one, when we were looking at land, we did find one, and it's land we already own. So I know the issues we had with the Nichols site, trying to buy that land was a definite challenge. This land we already have. And if you know where it is, there's a map on the next page, but it's behind the ABC store. And it's a detention pond right now. Mr. Johnson and I did have a discussion about that. I wanted to make sure before I ever brought this to you that we were okay from a drainage standpoint. And Mr. Johnson let me know that there really was no issues with if we were to use part of that land for a substation. We wouldn't be taking all of it, just a two hundred by two hundred piece of it on the north end, just big enough to get the substation in there. So we would allow there to be a retaining wall, but there still would be drainage on the west side of it, and the big part of the south side would still be there. So we would just be taking a little bit of that northern section.
So what do you do? So how would you make that detention pond compliant? I mean, you raise it up? Or, you know, what happens if it floods into the substation?
Even if we took that little two hundred by two hundred piece out of it, there's still enough capacity in there to do that. Because we wouldn't be taking that whole northern section of the detention pond. You'd still have basically drainage on the west side of the substation and the whole pond that's there on the south side as well. So if you look at the map, kind of drew it as-
I just figured the detention pond was, was built to that spec for some reason.
Right. And as I said, that's why I wanted to talk to Mr. Johnson before I ever brought it to you. And I don't know if he wants to add anything.
And just when Mike brought this to me, we, the county actually designed that. And as you recall, that pinch pond has a wet pond that is promptly to the south. But then there is a dry shelf to the north, okay? And, and except during the most extensive events, there's never water getting up that high, because the control structure is what drains under, that Nichols, Morphe. And so that's the controlling factor. So I went back and luckily I had the county's plans and, and a few little of the calculations that didn't really make a lot of sense why that shelf was done that way. So the question was, can we take a two hundred by two hundred of that shelf area that's dry ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, build it up, and then retain enough freeboard capacity within that pond? And yes, my conclusion is that it would have little, no effect to the performance of that pond and what, what role it plays right now. And, you know, basically, all we would do is, is build a retaining wall to bring the substation up. We'd have to, we have to fill in there, because we want, we don't want to keep it at that low level, because if there is a-
We don't want that point one percent to minus.
But as far as the function and the, the ability to retain in the freeboard in that pond, you know, yes, we would lose some capacity, but there's, but, but there is not, the, the reality of it is, is the level of the control structure, the pipes that go under the road to the south, is the controlling factor of how high it can get. And right now, there's still enough volume to back that water up in and around that substation without affecting its capacity.
The other advantage to that is we would free up that land next to the water tank for the water department, if they had any other infrastructure they needed to put in in that area, things like that. So before y'all, any questions on that? Because there are a couple disadvantages. You know, I want to give you guys all the information as we're doing this. The disadvantage is to move that substation, and we've got about, I think, eight hundred thousand already in the five year plan to rebuild the substation on site. If we were to move it, it'd be about an additional one point six million. But again, that gives us the ability to back up everything, our future expansion, not put the system at risk while we're doing this upgrade, things like that. And cleans up that whole site. You know, it's, it can be kind of a safety concern. And we would, yeah, need some additional feeder work. So that one point six, what that does is it pays for getting the site in place, the electrically, it doesn't play, it's not for the site work. We'd have to spend a little bit of money to get it up and build that retaining wall, but that's the electrical components are the one point six. So and that's all the electric work, the feeders in and out. We would come in with our twelve KV system underground. It would let us split it off. It would, you know, it'd still look very nice back there. They wouldn't have the huge distribution lines going behind them all or anything like that. We'd put that all in underground, back up to Fairhope Ave, and kick into the existing circuits that go out from there now. So now obviously, the next slide is recommendation. You know, I'd like to proceed and put that in the budget for next year to look at that. And, you know, one thing I did think of today is I want to look at our projections for cash flow for next year. The mayor's asked us to look at all that, so I want to get that information together as well, going forward, just to see where we are from an electric cash flow position, and see if, what kind of effect that would have on the budget. I think the gains, the gains we have in reliability, system improvement, being able to back up the system, just on the distribution piece, is well worth it. Then the piece that the mayor was discussing, the reason I include the information about the loop on the forty-six system, we thought of another way, about half a mile from this site is where existing forty-six infrastructure is at Ingleside. It'd be probably another five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand from a route that we looked at today, to be able to loop it into this brand new substation. And that would completely loop three of the four substations that we'll have remaining. And for Volanta, if we did have this new substation here, we would have the capacity between the new Nichols and this new substation, where we could completely back up Volanta on the twelve KV system with no issues whatsoever. So it would alleviate us totally of needing, thinking about doing this two point five million dollar loop by just adding kind of like another five hundred thousand or seven hundred and fifty thousand to loop the remaining substations on the, in the core of the city. This takes everything that lets us back up everything, lets us do all of our maintenance. We can take a circuit out of, out of commission if we needed to do breaker checks, substation checks, anything like that, without affecting the customer load whatsoever. And hopefully alleviate us, obviously for storms, you can never predict what storms are going to do, but it lets us kind of looping, pick and choose where we want to get things back up.
So what do we do now when we need to do some maintenance for, for backing it up? What do you mean?
Honestly, it crosses my fingers a lot on the forty-six KV system.
If you upgrade the system and you have additional capacity, is, is shutting down one system and relying on the additional capacity of another, that risky?
It can be. You know, the infrastructure that's out there is getting a little bit old. Our transformers, we're thirty, thirty years old, our substation transformers. Our distribution system is just as old. So when you start-
But we're getting all these upgrades to all these substations, so-
Right. And once the substations are upgraded, we'll be able to-
Once they're all upgraded, is, is the, is the backing up, what I'm saying, is it that critical? I mean, have we, give me an example of where we had, have had a major malfunction based on it now. And then I'm assuming once we increase capacity, it's going to be less risky. I'm not saying it's going to eliminate risk, but it'll be less risky, right? So have we, have we, can we point to situations where we had, you know, some kind of catastrophic failure and it cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars or something like that?
Not that I'm, not that I am familiar with. All I, all I can look at is what is the risk. And right now, we have single points of- And right now, we have single points of failure pretty much from Ingleside all the way to Fairhope Substation. An entire subtransmission line along Fairhope Avenue. If one of those structures goes down, we can't back that up. And it could be 30 years before that would ever happen, could happen tomorrow, I don't know. I can't stand in front of you and say, this is going to happen in next days because it's not.
In the timeframe, that's critical to include because it's not like you can turn around and fix. How long would that take?
Lead time on some of this equipment is pretty long. So, and, you know, with the subtransmission system, we can do some work in-house. A lot of that, we'd have to contract out.
So this originally budgeted at, you know, 8 million or 9 million dollars' worth of work for the substation upgrades. And we've combined a couple of substations that was initially not part of that. If we added another 2.1 million, the 1.6 to move the Fairhope Avenue substation, and then the upgrading, the 46 KV system at 500,000, that's an additional 2.1. What number are we looking at now?
That, you know, I would really like to kind of move forward with the substation. I'd like y'all to think about the subtransmission system, again, because that's a risk thing. The benefits that we could gain in reliability and the ability to back up, back up the distribution system from moving Fairhope Sub, that's part of it. But that lets us, that lets us do a lot of switching on our distribution system, which is related but separate than the 46 KV work. So it was, it was a concern that I saw when I came here and started looking at our system and how it's been put up over the years. You know, first, and first, first thoughts were, well, we need to loop this. And that's when we kind of looked at that 46 line all the way up Ingleside, all the way to Volanta Sub, and then coming back with 2.5 million. And then when we really get into it, if we're allowed to move with this, it does free up some options. So the new substations, if we move Fairhope, that lets us do a lot more with capacity in the center of town and move load around so that we could take one circuit out, two circuits out, and still back them up with other existing substations.
And then there's the new substation, the new Fairhope Avenue substation, which would be moved, backs up to eight, looks like eight residential lots. And we would have a concern that, you know, maybe those residents don't want a substation. They would say they didn't buy their house to have a substation put in their backyard. That's a concern.
Agreed.
Is there, I really hate to hear that we can't get that land from the school board over there. How about the church? They got any land they willing to sell us?
Not that I'm aware of. We could always ask them again. I know there's, there's an AT&T tower right there by the church.
Wasn't that their mobile tower that they put up there? Was it just that, I thought that was just their temporary tower.
I'm not sure if that was temporary or not.
I thought it was when they took them down, they put the mobile towers behind there.
But no, I can, I can look at that as well.
It might be cheaper to buy that land from the church than to move the whole substation.
We'd still have all the feeder work to do and things like that. And the substation would have some costs, but we could look at those numbers.
Just a thought. I don't know if it makes sense, but I do have some. Does anybody else notice that, that it's backed up to the, the new location, we backed up to residential lots?
And there's some really tall trees. On the north and the east side of this lot, there are some really tall trees through there that do provide some blockage. I had the zoning department kind of look at that as well. And there are a lot of tall trees through here.
Another issue, that is city property, is that right?
Correct, we already own it.
So if you're going to work, we're going to need to worry about what we can and can't build there. It's already city property, so they're aware of that city property.
And I said, we try to make it as low profile as we can, bringing the feeders out underground, things like that to help alleviate some of those concerns.
That's the same, we did do that, go through everything you want to do, spend all the money you can spend. 10.2, if you do the eight plus the 2.3.
Right, that's over the five years.
Yeah, the eight went up before when we combined the two substations. So that was the so-called option B at one time, and that's A, I believe.
Well, the point is, is once all that would be done and finished, are we back in the same boat two years? We're looking to, we don't have enough capacity in what we fixed? Or how much future growth will this accommodate? If you can estimate that.
Right now, our, our system peak right now is about 40, 44 megawatts. So the, from the transmission system, we're going to have 250s and the center tub is 20. So we've got 120 megawatts capacity on the, on our 115 to 46. Having 250s there right now, we can pick up the whole system with either one of those at peak. If we wanted to do it on a day like today, where the load is probably 20 megawatts for the whole city, then there's another 30 megawatts of growth that we can do. So.
And you're 44 now.
And that's peak?
That's peak. So that's worst case is peak. So we can pick up the whole city at peak right now. And that's on the subtransmission system. By doing the substation work, the other substations, that increases our ability to back up individual 12 KV substation, or circuits with other 12 KV circuits. So the whole, one of the main things we're going to get out of this is A, having newer transformers that we can trust, and we're, you know, start a really robust maintenance program on them, obviously. And then the ability to back up components of our 12 KV system with other sections of the system.
So you got, you've got the transmission system, 46 KV, it feeds everything. You've got the substations, and you've got the distribution. So you're focusing your money where it needs to be right now on the substations. Old equipment, undersized in some cases, but definitely, you're doing the right first step. The next thing we've got to look at is the reliability and the radial and the looping of the 46. You know, that will help. But I mean, that's more of a reliability rather than a capacity. Okay? And then after we finish those pieces, there will be a day when you need to give attention to your distribution system. And it'll need to be looked at and upgraded some too, but we're doing the right order here. And so to answer your question, it's a good question, and I don't blame you for asking it. One of the most difficult questions to answer is how long will this serve you? And I, you know, with your present rate of growth, I would say that you probably wouldn't have to do a substation work. I mean, barring something failing, 15 years.
What did you say? What would be our peak capacity? Did you say 120, 120 megawatts?
We'd have 120 megawatts of transformer capacity.
At the 115, the 40 substation, which feeds everything.
Okay.
But what you want to do is have that redundant. Since we only have one source into the city at Twin Beach Substation, go into the 50s, that's kind of the number you want to use is 50 because you want to be able to back one with, back one up with the other one.
Well, what I want to, what I do want to say to council though is that, you know, our Fairhope Electrical Service is kind of bounded. You know, we, we can't really grow, we cannot grow, pardon to use that term again, radially anymore. We can only infill with customers, and we are getting denser. And so all of our new customers are on existing properties. In other words, we don't, we're not having to service, you know, a 200 or 400 acre subdivision outside of the city. And the other thing that you have to keep up with is that, and while we're increasing our capacity, I don't know that we're going to have to increase capacity much more than this for the, maybe the next 40 or 50 years because it took Fairhope 100 years to get to this size. But recent advances in HVAC systems, for instance, efficiencies have gone up so much that even though you get denser, the load is not, load is not increasing with population necessarily. It's not linear. It, the curve is kind of flattening out. In other words, if you had no population growth, the load would actually decrease. So when you have a city that has no population growth, they're seeing less revenues from the electrical systems because of efficiencies and LED lights and ACs and stuff like that. So you got a little bit inherent, you got a little bit of capacity built in because of efficiencies.
You do that, and then, like you said, in City of Fairhope, what you run into is you run into older houses that are getting converted to larger.
That's true too, though. That's true. That's part of that infill, that's that density infill.
If you're going to go big, I mean, if you're going to go, go big, right?
But the other thing we're seeing is somebody will buy a lot in fruit and nut and divide it into two. So instead of one 1,200 foot square, square foot house, you get two 3,000 square foot houses that are three stories tall.
Yeah, the question is, you know, when you infill, how much more dense are we going to get? Are we going to get three times more dense? I don't know.
What you were saying, the electric capacity growth is not going to be, the ability to grow the electric is not going to be on par with the ability to grow water, gas, sugar.
That's exactly.
The law of limitations.
Right. That's right.
So we are going to see a pickup in electric vehicles over the next few years, I would imagine. But you're right, the efficiencies are becoming, you almost can't buy incandescents anymore. Everything's gone to LEDs. So the efficiencies are there, appliances are becoming more efficient every day. The only really true, you know, just at the Power Supply Conference we were at talking about, the biggest thing that they're seeing that's going to impact distribution systems is electric vehicles as they become a higher and higher saturation.
And that's why you'll see the big electric companies promoting it because they need customers.
It's the revenue.
If you look at Alabama Power, for instance, their forecast, and so you're looking at a macro scale, is their, their forecast, their demand is flat, even though, you know, their area population line is growing tremendously.
And some utilities have that issue on the natural gas system. Natural gas went to all the houses, they're seeing their load grows, their load go down.
I would say this, that with regard to the big picture, we're looking at, I think the city hired one contractor to do the substation upgrades, another contractor to do the line upgrades. It'd just be a lot simpler that way. With regard to the substation contractor, three of the projects, the design work on Twin Beach, Nichols Avenue, Volanta are almost complete. So we could, we're sitting here in April. Once the decision is made, I don't know what we're calling the Morphe Avenue site, we could conceivably go out to bid within two months after that decision's made, we'll say. And at this point, we're looking at the whole project completing probably mid to late 2021. Everything that could be finished. That could possibly be moved up a little bit, depending on the timing of your decision on the, on the Morphe Avenue lot.
Counsel, you know, for me personally, it's hard to make, you know, a multimillion dollar decision based on, you know, 20 or 30 minutes here. But do you have any inclination, what are you thinking about this moving of the Fairhope Avenue substation? Do you have any strong feelings on that right now? And also on the, the ability to, to loop this and back this up? That would be the, really, I guess what we're being asked to consider would be that 2.1 million dollars difference right there. Anybody have a strong opinion on that right now?
I do as far as the looping, it has to be done. It's the same as putting in water lines and stopping. You know, but loop the system or extend the valves out where you can't push water to go one way and can't use it the other way.
So then your answer is yes to both because if you moved it, you would also eliminate the 2.5 million dollar looping and you'd save 2 million there, which would ultimately save you 400,000 on, towards the, towards the new substation. So you're saying you're in favor of both?
The only reason is the importance of it, to me, is extremely important because when, let's say, C's quit running because of a breakdown and we can't back up that station, we're going to have a real problem.
I do, once again, I am a little concerned with those, with those residents there because it's one thing to move into a house and know that the city owns that, know that there's a retention pond there or settling pond. And it's, and it's something else to say that you put an electrical station in my backyard. It just inherently, I think people might view that a little bit differently. I think with me, you know, I don't know who we asked to do that. If we ask you to go and talk to the residents and ask them what they think. Because it does impact people.
You can do, you know, I've seen it done several ways, community meeting, you know, where we invite those residents in and we just sit down and talk to them, kind of show them conceptual drawings, things like that, or go talk to them individually. We can do it either way. I kind of like it, you know, to kind of bring them in and talk to them.
Yeah, I think.
And like I said, the nice thing is, you know, when I talk to the zoning guys, there's, you've got those trees that are blocking that view pretty much.
How does that, how do the trees factor into the protection of the substation? If they're pine trees and you got a limb just in a, in a 40 mile an hour wind, a limb comes off and it goes and shorts out a transformer?
There's another option here. We could, instead of hugging the east side of that lot, we could hug the west side of that lot, which is us away from the trees, leaves the trees for the barrier so that they don't even see any aspect of it.
Or you could get 30-foot-high holly trees as opposed to pine trees, which lose limbs pretty quickly. And they could do some damage. And I'm not the mechanical, I'm talking about the electrical damage if they contact two.
But you follow, if we'd moved to the west toward the ABC store, then we would be putting more distance between us and the neighborhood and leaving that tree barrier unscathed would be a possibility.
It'd be kind of like any tree getting in our lines now. If we had the loop, then you're able to isolate the section that's affected and bring the rest of the system back online. That's, that's the advantages of a loop is you can always take one piece of section, wire it out, and still back it up the other way.
What was it this last time? We had maybe a squirrel in somebody's yard and it shut down?
The outage we had on Church Street, yeah. And that was all on the distribution system. So that wouldn't, that wouldn't be kind of what we're talking about here. But before then, I don't know if you remember when we had that 46 KV switch fail and it shut down everything except for the 12 out of Twin Beach. It's those kind of situations that we would be able to back it up.
Jay, Jimmy, any thoughts?
I mean, I don't know a whole lot about it, so I guess I'm looking at the experts and this is what they're recommending. And I think trying to figure out a way to pay for it.
That's what the forecast is about.
Mayor asked us to look at the forecast.
It really would be just a matter of a very short-term cash flow situation where we would just need to have a lot of credit because there's money for all utilities to do all the upgrades, but there are going to be some short years that need to make up the reserve. So.
I think that, so, so would you want to start talking to?
I will do that.
The groups of people there? I might even, I don't know if it saves anything because your looping is going to cost more if you leave it at the existing site, right?
Yeah, the only way to loop it, if we left it at the existing site, is to go that route up Ingleside and go into Volanta and come back because we can't add, and even that's going to be a little bit tricky because we really can't add any infrastructure at Fairhope.
But you're going to have that 2.5 million either way. So it's a $2 million savings in that alone to move it. That justifies that, I think.
Well, I said, it doesn't 100% loop our subtransmission system, but it just gives us, it does give us the ability to back up Volanta with two really strong substations on the 12, on the distribution system.
I was going to say, do you need to talk to the church about the property behind it? But if that doesn't make sense, maybe, but that might be a backup plan if we get a lot of heartache with where you're proposing to move it to.
Yeah, I'll talk to the church and then we can start some kind of process.
I know they got a fairly, fairly substantial amount of land behind there. But they may have plans to expand, I don't, I don't know.
And we did talk to the people to the west of this site, the auto parts store. And the person I talked to said that they would have plans for that as well, so that was another thing.
And the board, Mr. Peterson, the board, they, they, they're putting their, what are they, expanding their retention there for the new school?
Their detention pond.
I guess if they move it any further west or north, it gets into their playground there, right? Which is their play area.
Correct. All right, I'll move forward with those two things. And so we'll get this information to the mayor and then submit it with the budget and I'll have everything written up before you buy that. So I have two small items for directors, but I can wait till then or now.
If you go, yeah, go, if you go quickly, yeah.
First one is, I just wanted to, I'm going to try to get some information together. I have, in my staffing for my department, I have in the line series, it's groundmen, linemen apprentice, linemen, and lead linemen. So we have three crews on the distribution side. So I have line, three linemen plus a service lineman. I have two apprentices and four groundmen. So I would like to propose is moving one of my groundmen up to lineman apprentice. We're getting ready to send him for the training for the lineman apprentice school. I talked to Jill this morning. One's at a level of 18, one's at a 22. So they overlap enough, so even if I did give this person a raise to move him into an apprentice lineman, it's still within the ranges of both, so it's not really affecting that. Eventually, you could make more. Eventually, he could make more if he tops out as a lineman apprentice, three years down the road when he gets that training done. Um, but that would give me three crews, three groundmen, three apprentices, and three linemen, um, which I think fits the department a little bit better. But since I was budgeted for four and two, I thought I would ask you guys if that was.
You wanna take the budgeted position of?
Groundmen.
Groundmen to an apprentice lineman?
Lineman apprentice, correct. And one's an eighteen, one's a twenty-two. Um, hm? Oh, twenty, yeah, eighteen to twenty, sorry.
And, and the, the salaries overlap quite a bit.
And they over, yeah, our salary ranges are sixty percent, so they do overlap quite a bit.
And you wanna do it prior to the budget cycle, which is why you're asking for that now?
He's getting ready to start the training, and, um, I don't, I don't know that it's fair to send him for apprentice training when he's titled as a groundman. So, and he's been here a while. He's a great guy. He's been practicing, so.
I don't, I'm, we're only talking about it at the most a few thousand dollars.
Correct. Even, and that's at the end.
That's at the, that's at your stream, right?
Three years from now, when he tops out.
I don't have a problem with that. It sounds, makes a lot, makes sense to.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. It just gives me, it just gives me threes and three and three, and lets me work the crews a little bit more, 'cause I'm gonna start rotating them and let everybody cross train with everybody.
Kevin?
Mr. Grounds?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Clark, will you put that on the next agenda?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, gosh, what was the last one? You can just keep me. I'll find it.
Okay. And we, we appreciate, uh, Stuart as well. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Thanks, Mike. All right. Um, Robert Brown, uh, wanted to put the discussion of rental property and business license ordinance back on the agenda. He, uh, couldn't make it tonight. Uh, I'll try to touch on this on his behalf. Uh, it was brought to many council members' attention, uh, when we started enforcing the business license ordinance for rental property. Uh, we've got, uh, managers of rental property and also individual owners of rental property that are upset with that enforcement. I think that, uh, the mayor spoke on this, uh, at the last work session. I spoke on it. I was in opposition to, to changing it. And, uh, Councilman Brown, uh, told me that, that I may be the only one, or might be in, in a minority on that decision. Uh, I had a discussion with, uh, Councilman Conyers about this once, and he had a pretty good argument that he made, and it had to do with this is, you know, rental property is a passive, uh, income, and, you know, especially long-term rental property is passive, uh, maybe short-term is not passive. Uh, but I thought about that argument. I thought, well, that's a pretty good argument, because you don't get a business license to own, say, an individual stock or something like that. But I really wanted to understand, and I, and I don't have the answers yet, before we were to make a decision on this, I think we really need to understand why this was enacted in two thousand and four. What's the premise behind most all cities having business license? And, and I, as I thought about it, I think one of the reasons also is that you have an accountability of who is renting their property. Are they in conformance with the law? Are they doing it in the right zoning? Also, uh, if you have investment property, uh, the tax rate is about double what it is, uh, for a homesteaded property. And so if you just eliminated that alone, uh, you were not just losing the roughly hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty dollar business license fee, uh, as, as Councilman Brown described it, as a money grab. That's what he said. And, and, that's probably true. All taxes are money grabs, though. I think that all, everything that we charge a fee for is somewhat of a money grab. We're, we're trying to generate revenue, uh, a, a strong term, but you could cla- you could classify it as that. But I also think that the reason you're doing is you, you have to regulate, you know, where you're, uh, renting property, and you also, uh, have to get that property tax that you are afforded. And, uh, whether we have a business license or not, and that keeps an accounting of who's renting what. So I, I really would like to have some more information before we take action on this. We still, I don't think anybody at this table, mayor, you might be able to, and if you can, you know, just share it with us, uh, you know, how, what's the impact to the city? If we eliminate it, is it five thousand dollar impact to the city? Then we might can live without that, but if it's a five hundred thousand dollar loss of revenue, we, we might wanna think about that.
Well, this is what I would like to do, that there's a lot of people who do business from home, and it's, that to me, that, that all, obviously needs a business license, but that really is where we're missing. The rental, if we're, if the concerns that you're bringing up, it could be done with an inspection from our building department, and that's what Ocean Springs does. It, you know, especially for short-term rental, they, yeah, they do get a business license, but the most important thing is they get an inspection, and they know that it's safe to, to rent out. You'd obviously verify the zoning and all these other things. If we were to consider even doing, where they have one property that they're renting and not doing a business license, you can get income there. It doesn't have to be very much, but more importantly, you're inspecting it and verifying all these things that a business license doesn't necessarily do. But we have, I mean, we're a town of entrepreneurs, and there is a enormous amount of people who work from home. That to me is where we need to concentrate on a business license, because it, all businesses pay it, you know? And there's more to just the rental that we need to talk about with the business license.
But, but sticking strictly to the rental right now, um, you know, I had this discussion with Robert, a- and I, what I told him is, you know, on the surface, I, I feel like I agree with him, that, yeah, I mean, if you are, like Jimmy said, if it's a passive investment, that you are not running a rental business, um, then I think, like we saw with the City of Enterprise, you can put some parameters in that regulates that without requiring everybody who owns a rental home to have a separate business license. However, you know, like, I think Lynn is the one that brought it up. She talked to some people, you know, the City Council of Enterprise enacted that. But I think Lynn said she talked to some people who work in the City of Enterprise, who said it's been really kind of a nightmare, uh, from a policing standpoint. I asked Robert, I said, now, how do you know, how do we go about determining who only owns two, who owns three, who owns six? I mean, that becomes kind of a nightmare internally, is do we take everybody's word for it? Do we actually have, you know, code enforcers that are going out looking at these? I mean, it, you know, it almost becomes.
Why would you do it now?
As I say, regardless of what you decide, it's a nightmare to try to figure out policing.
And so, and then on top of that, I mean, if, if, you know, we see enterprises take an issue on that, I'd like to look at maybe some other municipalities to see if anybody else is studying the same, the same issue. And if they haven't adopted this, why not? You know, because like I said, it seems like a pretty obvious thing when you first hear it. Is there more that we're not seeing? Is there some catch that maybe?
I, I agree.
We don't understand?
That's right. That's, that's what I'm trying to understand. What, what is it that we don't understand? I, I think that there's a lot more to the story than, than we realize.
But I still think, I mean, even really either side of it, policing is really a sore.
And that's where code enforcement comes in, but we just really hired a code enforcement person that can actually enforce. I mean, now, Kim was, you know, but she didn't have the ability to enforce, so we have one person, and we just hired her. So that's.
How did we know to send certain people notices that they needed a business license?
We didn't really have it, because we didn't have that person.
Right.
It was something that we hired this year, and we, based on our size, we're probably need more than one code officer, but it was at least a start.
Right, but didn't some people start, didn't this kind of come up, because people started getting notices that they needed?
That's, that's the new, that's the new code enforcer. We were just enforcing the codes that we already have on the books.
How did they know who?
How did that person notice anyone?
Jim Brown or Joe Blood?
How do they know that I?
It, it went out to all, it went out to everybody who, who rents. She can answer.
So there are ways you can find out. You can go on Airbnb, you can go on VRBO, you can look at the county's website to see if the property is homesteaded. If it's not, then you can contact them that way. Um, our code enforcements drive around, and if there's a for rent sign in the, in the, in the yard, they write it down, they come back, and they send a letter out. So it's.
Looking, I mean, listening to that, though, it almost, I mean, if, if we're only making five thousand dollars off of this money, then I'm, we're spending more than that trying to figure out.
But what I'm saying is, if, if they, but if you lose that property tax revenue, which they do have to pay by law, you might be losing five hundred or a thousand dollars per property. If we have hundreds of them in the city.
Conservatively, we have probably already issued a hundred business licenses this year, just from here going forward, and that's not even a fraction of.
We have thousands and thousands of businesses that do not have a business license.
And so even if, if the business license, even if it was a money grab, as Robert described it, even if it was, if you take away that, you're gonna have a hole in your budget. Are we gonna cut the budget? Are we gonna find the rev, uh, you know, another way to make up that revenue? Then you're gonna have to have another money grab. And then if you, if you don't enforce that, and you find out people are not paying their, their fair share of the property tax portion, I mean, that could easily run into the hundreds of thousands.
But now, I think, I think that it, I don't think you'd have a hole in your budget, because it's not been enforced prior to this. So new money, it's not, it's not money that we would lose, and I still.
Well, no, if you eliminate it, there, there are a lot of people that are compliant.
Correct.
Well, I, I still look at it from the passive versus active. I think a VRBO, that kind of stuff, to me, that's actively engaged in a business. Very different than if you have a rental house and you get a check once a month.
I, I will say, seldomly, um, on these, like, conservatively, there's hundreds of applications that we have received in the past three and a half months. Handful, maybe two handfuls have only owned one property.
Yeah.
I guess I still don't know if they need one for every location, but, I mean, I guess more, more info is.
Sites, there's always been site-specific, and mobiles, I believe. Uh, Lisa, did you tell me you looked at mobiles ordinance? Did you tell me that?
Not for this.
Was it Lynn that was showing me that? Maybe it was Lynn, maybe it was Lynn. I know I was kind of like near your office when somebody showed me that, um.
But you're already paying more for your property tax, and you can only homestead one, one property, so you're getting additional income through that.
Well, and the county has, um, asked for those records to verify. The people that are coming in to get business licenses on rental property, to make sure that they are properly.
And we're not asking that? And we're not asking for that? Or?
They asked, they asked us for it.
Okay, but is that something we?
If you list them separately.
If they're doing rental, then we have to also verify if it's not being used as a homestead, or marked as a homestead. We don't do that right now.
We're just gonna supply the county with, uh, the people who come in and apply for a business license to rent their home, and the county will then determine whether or not the property is allowed for homestead exemption.
But wouldn't the city also have a higher tax?
The county does.
But it's through the county?
The county does.
So it's not us?
We get, we get it from the county, but the county administers it for us.
Got it.
The real estate taxes.
So, so let me ask you, we got a, a adjournment here in just a moment, counsel. Can we, can we research this a little more before we take any action on it? I think we need more research.
Yeah, um, I think Lynn is gone today, which is why we needed to move it, 'cause she has done a lot of research, but I, but I think adding additional questions. 'Cause she did just a specific.
Yeah.
Research.
Uh, counsel, if you have any committee updates, uh, just if you can make them during your council comments, and we'll, we'll go ahead and adjourn for council.